I now call to order the New Coralisle City Council meeting, Thursday, August 23rd, 2018 at 10:00 PM. Mrs. Burner?
Mayor Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Tammy?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
Here.
Six members present.
All right, our application will be done tonight by Vice Mayor Bill Lindsey. Do you all mind standing?
Heavenly Father Lord, we ask you once again to give us guidance in the decisions we make for the city of this town. Father, we ask you to protect all of our service people, our firefighters and our police officers. We ask you to put your blessings upon everyone in this room tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Action on the minutes there are none. Communication is none. City manager's report tonight, there's none. Comments from members of the public. Please limit comments to five minutes or less. Mrs. Craybacher, if you don't mind giving your name and address just for the record. Thank you.
This is Pat Craybacher, 307 North Henry Street. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. I appreciate having a few remarks to make about the nominees. I'm thrilled that there will be a woman on council, but I commend that person that you select. What we need is a clear thinking, someone who's been participating in the city life, and someone who is able to be a peacemaker. And that's my word for you members of council currently. We have seen a lot of hijinks and a lot of other, what I call, unprofessional behavior, and I would challenge you to look at yourselves and to make sure that your behavior is above reproach, that you are honest and trustworthy, that you are at least representing the interests of citizens in New Coralisle. Because we love this little town, but some of us are getting pretty frustrated with what's been happening, and I just commend you to be compassionate for each other as members, to welcome the new councilwoman to council. And I will tell you, in my work as a humanitarian in Nigeria, where there's great struggle, great strife, data shows repeatedly that women are the peacemakers in the world, and so we need the men to be part of that too, if we're going to have a council that's really effective and representing the interests of this city. So I challenge you to be peacemakers.
Thank you, Mrs. Craybacher. Any other comments from members of the public? If you don't mind giving your name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Mills. I'll be fully upfront. I was a former member, resident of New Coralisle. I moved back in April. I paid city taxes, so I still feel the need or the right to say something this one final time before I ride away into the sunset. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One, on this council member aspect. You know, there's already a huge controversy in this town, several times in the past six months, and now there's another one regarding applications and proper filing of them. I don't know the other two applicants, and I don't mean ill when I say this, but it's my opinion that if proper paperwork is not filled out, that it should be discarded. That's just common sense to my mind, and I apologize if I offend the person who applied and did not fill out the proper paperwork, but that should be considered. Second, I've come here to support Becky McKenzie as the current, one of the applicants to get the current position. She applied a couple of months ago, and I think that she would be great for the job. If I were still a resident, and if I could still vote here, if she were running, I would vote for her. I'd actually like to bring up a quote from the New Coralisle News back in February, I believe. It says, "Becky, I really, really hope that you run in two years, Zed Reynolds. I think you'll be a fantastic councilwoman when you win in two years." That's an endorsement to me. Also, I think that I'm pretty far right on the political spectrum. I debate whether I should say this or not, but Becky and I probably agree about this much on political issues. I'd vote for her in a second for this position. She's the best person, best lady for the job, best person for the job. She's a young woman with a family, and I don't see anybody on this council who's a young lady with children. This council needs that. This council, this town, needs somebody with that mindset. This council should consider that when they vote. Second, this council needs to learn to behave. Quit calling each other out on social media. Two days ago in New Coralisle, it needs to stop. Apparently it was bad luck that somebody deleted their post. Personal attacks on each other. I could go on. It's not going to do anything. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Any other? Sorry, I've been cold. I've been trying to fight. Any other comments from members of the public? Mrs. Bible, if you mind saying your name and address, please.
Judy Bible, 806 White Pine Street, New Coralisle. I also am here to support Becky. I read all the applications and resumes, and she is the only one who mentioned any type of plan or vision for what she wants New Coralisle to be. And she has been at every meeting I've been to, and the meetings I don't make it to and watch, she's always here, she always participates, she gives her opinions, she works for the city on the, what is it, the garden?
The Parks Board.
Thank you.
Parks Board.
Board. And quite frankly, to my knowledge, I've not seen any of the other few candidates at any council meeting. So the person who is already putting in the time and effort to participate, I feel that right there should give her a bonus towards getting the position.
Any other comments from members of the public? None? Mrs. Burner?
No.
Mr. Lowery?
I just didn't know if I was able to add some comments to the order.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Feel free.
Thank you. Just on some of your guys' comments in general, Mr. Mills, you spoke up there today, and I'd actually just spoke to Mayor Reynolds outside the shelter house about, you know, some of the things that were said on social media, you know, and, you know, hard conversations between the two of us. My big issue isn't if anybody read it, is, you know, I believe that, just like we've said in other meetings, that it's not a law that you had to put in the application by our charter. There's no law that says they have to put in the application. But the attorney also didn't say that you do have the option, since there is no law, since you did put it in the post, on the newspaper, on the job post, you still are able to follow that direction of which you were given for the job posting. So basically, you know, the ball is in our court whether we want to accept it or deny that application. I think the individual candidate in question as far as the new application, I mean, their application is great. I mean, I've talked to a couple of other people around town, and I have no doubt that she would probably be a really good candidate, but I just firmly believe, me personally as councilman, that, you know, if you see a job posting for whether it's council or work at a restaurant that Mr. Shammy runs, anything, if it says "application," you need to fill it out. I mean, it's just, I think that's the fairest way to do it. You know, to me, there's no way around it. I mean, you can say legally you don't have to have it, but I think out of good faith that those who did do what was asked of them, that's where I stand on it. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to reject Mrs. Hopkins' resume as her application for city council.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb? Any discussion on this at all, council? No.
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
No.
Mayor Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shammy?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Question, Ed, 33.
Motion fails.
Yes.
Ms. Mambal, do you have anything before we get to the actual nominations?
No, just again, thank you to those who did. Thank you all, too. Very nice and good people that we need in New Coralisle. So thank you.
So resolutions, none tonight. Orders is none tonight. Other business, appointment of a new city council member to fill the vacancy for former councilman Aaron Lighty. Sorry, Aaron Lighty's seat. You can make your nominations or your motions to nominate.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans, I'd like to make a nomination for Becky McKenzie.
Is there a second?
I'll stand it.
Any other nominations on the floor?
Mr. Evans.
Mrs. Chair Lindsey?
I'm going to nominate Amy Hopkins.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have anything to say on the, just commended motion to close nominations?
Move to close nominations.
You can't nominate Mrs. Hopkins. Motion's dead. That's the end of it with her.
What are you talking about?
According to Robert's rules of order, when you've got a tie vote, and once that motion has been made and been voted on, you have a tie. Her application is dead. Her resume is dead.
No, sir. No, sir.
Yes, sir.
The motion's dead. The motion was to not accept it. The council did not vote in a majority, in fact, to reject it.
But when it becomes a tie vote.
It doesn't pass, so it fails.
Sees out of the equation.
That is not the case, sir.
According to Robert's rules of order.
I know Robert's rules forward and backwards. I know that is not the case, but thank you. Your concerns are noted. Anyone have a motion to close nominations?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, nominations are now closed. Anyone have anything to discuss on either of the candidates for Mrs. McKenzie or Mrs. Amy Hopkins?
I just have a...
Yeah, go ahead.
Can, just a basic question to Mayor and Vice Mayor, because I know this is getting a lot of people's minds. Can you guys give a...
Mr. Burner?
Can you guys, can you as Mayor and Vice Mayor guarantee that your vote is being done because of what we believe is best for New Coralisle and not because of what another candidate's actions were towards you two?
Yes, definitely. I will vote for, in my opinion, the most qualified candidate for council.
Absolutely.
Any other comments on this? All right, Mrs. Burner, would you like to call the roll for Mrs. Becky McKenzie first?
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
No.
Mayor Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shammy?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb? Yes.
Three, three tie. No one has a majority, so the motion fails. Mrs., any other comments on Mrs. Hopkins and her application for qualifications? Hearing none? Mrs. Burner?
Mr. Cobb?
This is for Mrs. Hopkins, if I may.
Are you saying clearly?
I thought I did. For me or Mr. Cobb?
Okay.
Sorry?
No.
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
Excuse me?
He said it.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lowery?
No.
Mr. Shammy?
Yes.
No one has a majority on this, so the motion fails. Counsel, any other comments in other business?
Another question for Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Can I just ask your opinion? You know, and I wasn't on many different pages last night, but, I mean, with what we saw a lot of feedback as far as the question, the application in question, I'd seen pretty much, I didn't see anyone, as far as I could tell, that was in favor of accepting an individual's without an application. I'm not saying there isn't, but I didn't see the vast majority of any discussion on the matter here tonight. I mean, wouldn't you say as a council member, us as a group, why shouldn't we say Mr. Evans? Why don't we say us as a group? With the amount of people that did come tonight on such a, I would say, like a soft meeting, if I don't put a big meeting in comparison to some of the things we've done, that we should follow the advice that we were given from the voters who put us in place?
Yes.
Depending, for me, it's about what's legal and what's not. It's about legal and right, not what's fair, because what the law director said...
Well... It is about you. It's all about you, Ethan.
Mr. Craybacher, now, please.
No.
Yes, we have a meeting format. Just hold tight, and you're breaking it, so hold tight.
And we've had this party of some...
Hold tight.
Participate.
Hold tight. So it's about what's legal, and we were allowed to accept it or deny it depending on what the motion was to be made, and so I think that the candidate who I supported was the most qualified, in my opinion.
So you can put your sentence on. It's a weak motion.
Well, I mean, let's say we were to eject the application, right?
Right.
If that was the way the vote turned out, and then we said, "Well, we're not going to accept Mrs. Hopkins' application," or Becky's, or Mrs. Wright's, and the law director said, "Yeah, you have the legal ability to accept it, and there's nothing against it." I would worry about the big L-word, litigation. It's, I mean, it was accepted, the law director said...
The whole amount of litigation is due.
It's legal, so...
Excuse me.
Wait one second. We're going to, we'll get to those comments in a second. So it's not about what's, it's about what's legal to me, and I supported us, qualified candidate, in my opinion.
Do we, do you and I agree, though, that the law director didn't say that it is perfectly legal for us to, yes, accept it, or we could also deny it if we wish, because it was put in there?
If council wanted to deny it, they, you would have that right to do so.
But I'm saying it was legal in her.
She said that it was legal for us to remove any candidate we chose not to like. I mean, this is how I read it.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel, any other comments? Mr. Cobb?
Again, this is one of the biggest shams I've seen out of this council in a long, long time. You two gentlemen will not accept the blame for the fact of your responsible actions a while back. Now you're bringing it forth again.
Mrs. Hopkins, are you okay?
I almost think I should be allowed to speak on my behalf, since there's been so many things said about me and so many things people don't know, and I didn't want to cause any more conflict on this council than there was.
Mrs. Hopkins, I can assure you that this is not about you, not about your resume. It's about the way the game is played. And this is a very dirty political game.
But see, what's so confusing to me is I applied before, and I wasn't elected, and I applied the same way with my resume. Nobody said a word. I didn't know it was wrong. I put in my resume this time. I went to the person at the window and told her I wanted to apply, and she said, "Okay." She took my resume and never said anything about an application. I could apply the same way I did. I have no reason why not to vote on an application.
Again, this is, this is not about you.
Well, there's one other thing, too. I should know we could bring supporters. I have a lot of people that are voters of New Coralisle that would have supported me. I could have filled up this room. I've been a resident for 41 years, and I've been very active in the community. I have been publicly yelling at people or on Facebook, and I've been active in fun drives, food drives, the festivals, the different things. So that's the only thing...
Well...
...that the people here, if I knew that.
I'm going to say this. It's because of what goes on in the background that you don't know about.
Amen, Bill.
And consequently, there's been a lot of by-play about who was going to be elected to this position, and we knew coming in here tonight what was going to happen. I'd bet you a million dollars to one of what was going to happen, and I'll guarantee you what will happen tomorrow morning.
But see, sitting here, I see that the cards were stacked, okay? No, she has...
Guys, 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 we'll get to you in a second, Miss Mambal. We'll give you a last 30 seconds.
She has people here, and everybody was talking about her, and people talking about the other candidates. They don't know. I don't know how they don't know me, since I've sold my real estate for 25 years here and been so active, but it doesn't matter. The biggest thing was, I thought what I did was correct, and I thought the last council meeting would have voted for my application, for me to be disqualified, instead of putting me, because this is very nerve-wracking, and then say I'm not qualified.
All right, now, we're going to get to Mrs. McKenzie. We'll give you five minutes as well, so...
Well, my first point is that at the last nomination, you specifically said that you would not break the tie or be the tie. You said that you would vote as the majority did on council, and again, you are not doing that. Every time someone brings something to you and calls you out on anything, you have an excuse or a reason for not doing what you're supposed to do, and I don't understand it. So either you were lying then, or you're just doing what you want to, when you want to.
All right, thank you.
I would like to know what the reasoning was, actually. That's, that is a specific question for you.
I voted for the most qualified candidate.
No, that's not what you said.
That is exactly, this is where I'm at.
That's what the last appointment, you said you did not break the tie or be the tie, that you had to vote with the majority. That's what you felt was right. And what are you doing today?
I voted for the most qualified candidate.
No, that's not what you said.
Mrs. McKenzie, that is where I'm at.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Excuse me. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Cobb?
You contacted me this week.
Yes, I did. I did.
And the discussion come up about Mrs. McKenzie.
Yes, you asked me the question.
Pardon?
After you asked me the question, yes.
Okay. You called her a prior baby. You're upset with her because she started a recall petition on you, and you were more or less disappointed in her. And Vice Mayor has done the same thing, contacted me and the same thing. And you've also said you're upset with Mr. Cook for advising Mrs. McKenzie to circulate the recall petition. Now, I mean, you know, by the John Houston's office, a resume is not the same as an application. There's two different things there. But like it comes down, you're going to have the final say. And I just think, you know...
Pardon?
Chance of you're right. But I have to say that, and that's just what's been brought up, if it causes any abuse between us, so it does. I'm here to represent the citizens.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Special technicality of about two minutes.
Gotcha.
Go ahead.
Just one more thing. You don't have to be upset with anybody for circling. I did that in Miami for a while. No one directed me to do that. That's mine. Help me brand you, because you know and feel what you did was wrong, and you too will. So go continue to do what you do, and I will continue to come to meetings, and I'll continue to speak, and then I'll win next year.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Lowery?
Uh, Ms. Hopkins, I apologize. You do have to sit through this. I mean, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. For me personally, I, I please hope you understand, I'm not questioning any of your abilities or anything on your resume. I mean, it was, it was a great resume. For me, once again, it just boiled down to black and white, literally, on a newspaper that said, "You must turn in a resume." I mean, there are applications, thank you, I'm sorry. But, I mean, that's really what it is for me. I mean, I actually, I've spoken to the past councilman, your day, Aaron Lighty, and he asked what I thought of her, and I said, "Swear on my kids." And I said, "I'll tell you what, she has a very impressive resume, and I think she'd probably make a really good candidate." I don't, or councilwoman, I don't know her real well. I said, "But..." But with that being said, Mr. Cobb, if what you were saying is true, as far as either one mayor or vice mayor saying that they wouldn't support Becky because she went for a recall petition, I understand, that's, you know, it's not fun to go through. That's, that's a personal reason to not vote for somebody. It's not a reason that is judged on behalf of the city, you know? So I think if that is a reason, if that is true, you know, I'm just going off what he just said. If you're saying you wouldn't support or vote for somebody for a council because they did a recall petition on you, that's, technically, it's irrelevant. It's about, you know...
What's best for the city.
Thank you. What's best for the city, and if they put in a vote, then it's awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any other comments, questions, or concerns?
She had a question.
Ms. Bible, sorry.
Yeah.
Do you mind giving your address?
Oh.
Your address. Oh, you already gave it, sorry. Go ahead.
So if nobody's elected tonight to the position, what happens?
Pursuant to the city charter, you'll have to wait 30 days for the deadline to expire. And then according to the charter, the mayor will have seven days after the 30 days to make the appointment. Then if I fail to do that within the seven days, it goes to a special election. Any other comments? Counsel? Mr. Ewet, you seem... Go ahead.
Dana World, 1014. I got a couple of questions here. Mr. Lighty, or I'm sorry, Mr. Shammy, you run shoeies. When someone comes in, do they fill out an application?
Depends on what for.
No, 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 no. When someone comes in, you cannot legally hire someone without an application. You cannot.
Sir, you have a question?
Sir, I hire people physically for you.
We had, it's all online. It's all automated.
But it still has to be filled out, does it not?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bridge, when someone comes in to apply for a city of New Coralisle, do they fill out an application?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins, when someone goes in for a loan, do they fill out an application?
Yes, but ask me if, when you get hired, are you taking after four, still on an application? That's where I work and retired, and I submitted my resume.
But when you, when you get interviewed, do they have you fill out applications to get your information? Did you fill out W-2s? Did you fill out W-4s? Applications are part of that process.
Mr. Ewet, this isn't...
My name is World Walt Ethan.
World Walt? All right. My apologies, Mr. Ewet.
I'm just saying, in every part of life, when you apply for something, whether it's a credit card, or a job, or a city council position, an application is required. End of discussion. It was clearly printed in the ad. Application must be filled out and returned to the city building. That was not fulfilled. It's plain and simple. I have no dog in this place. I truly don't. You know, I've been asked multiple times to, to apply for this position, and I don't do it because it's just, there's no need to. I can get my word out much better than squabbling up here with seven other gentlemen. But what it boils down to is what's right and wrong, and the right way is following the procedure, following what was in the paper, what was in the ad, what is typical process to apply for a job, a credit card, or any, a home loan? It's all applications, not resumes. sorry, Mr. Shammy, you run shoeies. When someone comes in, do they fill out an application?
Depends on what for.
No, 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 no. When someone comes in, you cannot legally hire someone without an application. You cannot.
Sir, you have a question?
Sir, I hire people.
They go on, we hit, it's all online.
But, it still has to be filled out, does it not?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bridge, when someone comes in to apply for a city of New Coralisle, do they fill out an application?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins, when someone goes in for a loan, do they fill out an application?
Yes, but ask me if, when you get hired at Red State, you have to always fill out an application. That's where I worked and retired, and I submitted my resume.
But, when you, when you get interviewed, do they have you fill out application to get your information? Did you fill out W.2s? Did you fill out W.4s? Applications are part of that?
Mr. Rowland, this isn't.
My name is Rowland.
Rowland, all right. My apologies, Mr. Rowland.
I'm just saying, in every part of life, when you apply for something, whether it's a credit card, or a job, or a city council position, an application is required. End of discussion. It was clearly printed in the ad. An application must be filled out and returned to the city building. That was not fulfilled. It's plain and simple. I have no dog in this fight. I truly don't. You know, I've been asked multiple times to, to apply for this position, and I don't do it, because it's just, there's no need to. I can get my word out much better than squabbling up here with seven other gentlemen. But, what it boils down to is what's right and wrong. And the right way is following the procedure, following what was in the paper, what was in the ad, what is typical process to apply for a job, a credit card, or anything, a home loan. It's all applications. Not resumes, applications.
Not as a salary manager in some places. All you got to do is give your resume.
Is this a salary manager position?
I'm just saying, you're saying all, you're saying, you said all must fill out an application. It's not the case in some places where they don't, they accept your resume.
But, in this case, in this case, when it said, "Application must be filled out," that's the end of the discussion.
Right.
Just agreed, right. But yet, you voted no against it.
The law director said it wasn't against the law.
It's not against the law. I mean. It's not procedure.
I understand procedure.
Maybe we should, as council, create procedures for the future. Mrs. Craybacher?
Pat Craybacher, 307 North Henry Street, New Coralisle. I'm really ashamed of council, because you seem to want to do only what you want to do, what's best for your careers or your thoughts. You don't follow procedures. You don't care what the citizens have expressed. And you show a blatant disregard for respect for each other in this community. I'm embarrassed. And we need better from our elected officials, Mr. Shammy, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Lindsey, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Cobb. You guys are the ones that need to make the decisions that are right, proper, just, fair, and equal. And if you can't do that, then you auto-resign your position.
Ethan, you and I got in an argument on Facebook recently.
Yes, sir.
I believe that one of the things that you said was that I should not question your charter integrity. I think you meant character integrity. Sounds like we're not going to come to an agreement. You guys aren't going to, I'm going to come to an agreement tonight about whom to appoint. I challenge your character and your integrity as the mayor to let this go to special election, and don't you dare make that appointment. Show a shred of character and integrity and allow that to happen.
Any other comments from members of the public?
My name's Bobby Moore. I live at 338 Gielwood. Now, I don't get to come to city council meetings because I work, and I never get to make it. Tonight, I busted to get here because I wanted to see this dog and pony show that I watch on YouTube every month. And it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. People that I work with that don't live in New Coralisle, watch these videos and laugh, and tell me how sad it is that we live in this city, that we have to put up with this. I don't know what your relationship is with this lady. I have no idea who she is. Alls I know is what I read in her resume. I know Becky. I've known Becky for a long time. I know Kathy. I don't know what, it's, it's going to be the Good Old Boys Club, and you're bringing her in. Is she your neighbor, your cousin? I don't know, Ethan, but it's sad. You sit up there so smug, and everything, it's Ethan's way or the highway. You know what? It's sad. You embarrass our city. I feel sorry for you. I know you sit there like.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public?
I don't, I don't know her either. I just know what was on her resume. But, nothing on her resume told me anything about what her plans were for New Coralisle. To me, the people who actually put forth some effort into saying, "This is what I hope for New Coralisle. This is what I would like to work for towards, for New Coralisle," they should be the ones that are in contention. Nothing against her, but there was nothing at all in her resume that stated that. It just, I looked at it and thought, well, she's applying for a position in an office somewhere. It's not anything to work towards what she wants New Coralisle to be. And quite frankly, the three of you, it's really blatantly obvious what's going on.
It is.
Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lowry.
A couple of questions.
Yes.
Are we allowed, okay, one, I, Mr. Mills, I was actually thinking of the same thing you were, before you mentioned it. Me personally, you know, with this much energy into this, I don't know your thoughts on it. If nothing's done tonight, I would, I would love to see it go to the voters. I mean, that would be the most honest and fair way to handle it. I mean, because obviously, there's people that don't trust me, there's people that don't trust me, there's people that won't settle down with one. I think all of us are 100% favorable about the city, but I think that would be the fairest way to handle it as far as things being questioned, as far as applications or issues on the subject. I don't know if you would consider that. I think it'd be an interesting thing to consider in your position. Now, also, are we allowed to, if you wanted to make a motion, I'll just say, am I allowed to make another motion, even though we went through?
To vote on the applicants again? No, I believe our true state, let me just find it, just to be clear and be safe.
Yeah, take your time.
Yeah, no motion, resolution, ordinance, or other having been voted upon shall be introduced within 90 days.
That's fair.
Sorry.
No.
Once a motion's voted on, they can cast or fail.
Okay.
Except for the concurrence of council, and I believe once it's a concurrence of council, we'll push that, sorry.
Wouldn't that make the nominations?
Make them what?
Yeah, we couldn't re-vote on them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, it's just dead.
So, it's dead.
Yeah, okay. The whole issue is now dead.
Okay. Can I ask you your thoughts on that idea?
On what?
On letting it go to voters?
Uh, I think that we've done this before, where we've had appointments, and it's not gone to voters before. Uh, but that's something I'll definitely think about.
I'm confused.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, I don't believe we've ever had an appointment that's ever gone before the voters, not to my knowledge. I'm not saying it hasn't.
What, that's weird.
Yeah, I'm not saying it hasn't been one like 40 years ago, but to my current knowledge, no. Uh, but that's something I would definitely think about and pray about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Mr. Lowry, you've got the chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lowry.
Our business is finished. I mean, we adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.